All right, I'd like to welcome you all to Lawrenceburg City Council Meetings of July 21st, 2025, and the first meeting we will have will be the Board of Works. Have a roll call.
All right, we got Board Member Tommy Rolet.
Present.
Board Member Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. City Attorney Dale Welton.
Yeah.
We got President Kelly Milan absent and myself.
All righty. Let me guess, I'm here.
Uh, what are you?
President.
Are you president tonight?
Yeah.
So you're, okay. President Tony Abbott.
All right. This is gonna be a quick meeting here. Does the board have any announcements?
I have none, Your Honor.
No, sir.
All right, move on to approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Tommy.
Second.
Second by Brett, all in favor.
Aye.
Minutes passed. Nothing under new business. Moving on to old business, nothing there.
I have nothing.
Nothing, all right. Move on to a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Brett, all in favor.
Aye.
Board of Works adjourned. Moving on to the parks and rec.
Did you take my paper?
Nope.
It disappeared.
I hear you have them.
Thank you. It was here. Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, we got Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Board Member Tommy Rolet.
Present.
Board Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board Member Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Yeah.
And myself.
All righty, have any announcements from the board?
The only thing that I'd like to bring up, there is a hornet's nest over at George Street, but I'll make-
That's already been taken care of, Dylan. I called Brad and he was on it in 45 minutes Sunday. Very good job.
His eyes were swelled up, but he got to bear with it.
I was very surprised. I called him Sunday and he said, "I'll be right there," and it was gone. So, I was taken care of. I think the merry-go-round at Art Street Park is fixed now, and I think they're waiting for a part for this chair.
Still from the warranty?
Yeah. Yep, it's all. Any other announcements? Move on for approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Brett.
I'll second.
Second by Dylan, all in favor.
Aye.
Minutes passed. There's another one. New business, I don't see nothing under it. Moving on to old business, nothing there. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Dylan, second.
Second.
Second by Lenny, all in favor.
Aye.
Parks adjourned. Move on to the utility board. It's a utility board meeting, July 21st, 2025. Roll call, please.
All right, Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Board Member Tommy Rolet.
Present.
Board Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board Member Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Yeah.
And myself. All right, is there any announcements from the board?
Just, the only thing that I'll say is, we turned in, for public knowledge, we turned in choices for Utility Director, so we should be making some movement on that relatively soon.
Yes. All right. See, that was a new business. What was that? Is that under new business? I'm getting lost here.
I think she's doing that under announcements.
Under announcements, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I need approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Lenny, second.
Second.
Second by Dylan, all in favor.
Aye.
Minutes passed. Moving on to new business, none. We'll move on to old business. You guys have any old business? Hearing none. Review and discussion of claims for board approval.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tommy.
I'll second.
Second by Dylan, all in favor.
Aye.
Minutes passed. Motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So moved.
Motion by Lenny.
Second.
Second by Brett, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Certified. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Stand for the pledge for the city council.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think this meeting's gonna be as quick.
No.
All righty, have a roll call, please.
All right, we got Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Dylan Little.
Present.
Councilperson Tommy Rolet.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Yeah.
And myself.
All righty. Announcements from the board? Hearing none, we'll go on to the board reports. Street alleys and curbs, myself. It's a mess. They're working on it. We did get the bike race done, that surprised me.
And there was no recs. Would've heard.
I heard there's a couple. Anyway, and street alley and curbs on Little Hill.
It's all good.
All good. And Brett, finance.
No report, sir.
No report. Parks and playgrounds, Dylan.
Reported on the parks and recs meeting.
All righty, and fire, Mr. Rolet.
No report.
No report. All right, I need an approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
You guys are quick. Motion by Lenny, second by Tommy. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. You guys got all your reports on the fire, police, EMS, and city court?
Uh, Your Honor?
Yes.
Do you have another set of minutes in your pocket, uh, the July 1st minutes?
Yeah.
To approve as well?
All right.
That was the work session.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 1st?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tommy, second.
I'll second.
By Dylan, all in favor?
Aye.
July 1st meetings, minutes approved. Moving on to new business, Victoria Beshear, the OOR bid openings. Here, Dell. This is for you.
Do you have a touchy? Okay, I did wanna give just a quick update on how the OOR program is going, so you should all have a colorful sheet in front of you that shows a status of where all of the homeowners are that we're currently working with. Unfortunately, we only do have about three homes that are complete right now. Contractors are working, weather has not been our friend lately, and just with workloads, but I have been in touch with them and hopefully we'll see more progress in the next couple of weeks. We do have eight homes that were out to bid, so we'll be opening those this evening. I would ask that you allow me to take these back to the office, look at the bids for not just lowest bidder, but the most responsive, to make sure that we get these homes complete in time, and that we've got a comparison of apples to apples on some of these bid documents, so. I will open and read these aloud, and Judy will write them down for me. Who's the first contractor? So this one, Jackson Construction is the first one. So we have two bid amounts, one is with a shingle roof, and that's $26,675. And then a total bid with a metal roof, and that's $30,595. Next, we have 130 Sunny Drive, total bid is $27,475. 220 Bilby Drive, $25,565. 119 West Center Street, $16,250. 216 Vine Street, $39,625. 443 Canal Street, $1,650. 107 Heiner Heights, $13,415. 712 Bilby Road, $3,700. That is it for David Jackson's bids. The next contractor is Jeddah Electric Heating and Cooling. 220 Bilby Drive, $31,300.
Could you repeat that, sorry?
It's okay. 220 Bilby Drive is $31,300.
Thank you.
And what's the construction company?
Jeddah Electric.
Jeddah?
Next address, 107 Heiner Heights, $17,275. 130 Sunny Drive, $27,600.
How much was that?
712 Bilby Road, $3,100. 216 Vine Street, $53,700. 1021 Fairview Drive, with a shingle roof, $31,000. With a metal roof, $45,850. 119 West Center Street, $16,500. 443 Canal Street, $2,800. The last contractor that bid is Mike Stalen. First bid's first 712 Bilby Road, $4,200. 119 West Center Street, uh, he did not total his numbers here. Let's see. 216 Vine Street, $29,930. 107 Heiner Heights, $30,040. 220 Bilby Drive, $26,310. 1021 Fairview Drive, with a shingle roof, $23,780. Metal roof, $28,460. 130 Sunny Drive, $25,000. And those are it. So we'll take these under advisement. Obviously, we've got some differences here. I'll make some phone calls tomorrow, make sure we are comparing apples to apples, and then with some of the higher dollar amounts, we really try to stay around 15,000, we can go up to 20 if there is a significant need, but we may have to cut out some scope of work items to get down to that amount. So we'll get this prepared, send it off to Okra, and hopefully be signing contracts in the next couple of weeks.
So, so your high limit is 20,000?
Yeah, 20 is probably like the most that we would spend per home.
Those are ones that's more than that.
So what we'll do, I know there are some that are significantly lower, we would have to get direction from Okra depending on what the need is, because obviously you can't cut out like an entire roof if that ends up being the situation, so we'll consult with them and see if, if we can go a little bit higher in those situations.
Now, does the homeowner got the opportunity, if you say you pay 25 and they say it's 26, 27, do they got the opportunity to come up with the money?
Yes, we, we can explore that option too, yeah. Yep.
All right, do we need to vote on this table, or just let them look into it?
Yeah.
We recommend the lowest responsible bidder for each category based on their great talent, so they're able to do that. So we would approve the recording based on their determination of the lowest responsible bidder, and we'll do that internally with those.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, please.
I need the motion to allow them to look into it.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Tommy, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Dylan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next up, Fire Chief Tremaine, seller of the heart rate monitor.
Yeah. Since we took over EMS first year, they come to me and we had a spare heart monitor, and it's only three years old, so I had, we asked people out to try to see if there was any interest in it. It's been a while, but we did find Morris Hill would like to purchase this, so I'm here to ask for permission to sell this to Morris Hill.
Okay, with the new ice rink farmer's market building, do we have one already in the budget for it? I mean-
Um, we'll probably just purchase that. This is a little more advanced for that, but we'll see about getting just regular or automatic for that.
All right.
What's the dollar amount that they're wanting to purchase it for?
Uh, they're gonna, they agreed to 15,000.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to sell it as is to a municipality?
Yeah, goodbye me, I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Brett, sell it as is to another municipality, I have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Tommy, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
All right, that's, next is, that's done with the old business, unless somebody has something?
I have nothing.
All right, move in. Here's what you all been waiting for, comments from the audience. Whoever wants to speak, come to the podium and state your name, please.
I'm gonna get this over with. Hi, my name is Colleen Aug, and my husband Dan and I have lived in the Riviera community for 15 years. And since moving to Lawrenceburg, we've really enjoyed seeing the city and all the improvements that have been made down here, with the lights, the papers, the, um, where we have music on the river, and all those wonderful things that the people in the city are enjoying. We are only asking for the Riviera, uh, community to, to be provided, the services, the same services that are provided here. No, Fisher is no longer involved in our community, it's just us residents, and we are all taxpayers, and we are all voters, and we would like to have the services that are provided here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Penny Schroder. I've lived in Lawrenceburg nearly all my life. My parents owned a family business for many years, and I'm very invested in our beautiful city. I've been widowed for 11 years, and I rely on social security for my income. When our HOA fees increase, it puts a hardship on me as well, well as other senior citizens in Riviera. I am asking council to please incorporate the streets of Riviera, which would definitely help our ever-growing budgets. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Shirley Graff, and I also live at Riviera Condos. Thank you, first of all, for hearing us and hoping we can incorporate the streets of Riviera. My husband and I lived at Three Mile Ridge from the year of 2006 to 2010. He was president of the HOA for that time that he was there. He met numerous times with the council that was there and the mayor that we had in our city, and we finally had one sit-down meeting with the council. We were told that that could never be taken over by the city because it did not meet the specs. So, you know, we took that for granted, but once we moved out, we understand that, you know, a new HOA president became there, and for somehow, he talked to the council, that the new elected council, and he was able to get it incorporated, that it now belongs to, the city takes care of their streets and that. And that's really what we're just asking, if we could have our streets and that taken care of, to help us with the budget. As she said, most of us up there are seniors, we live on social security, I also am a widow, so, you know, you only have one income coming in, and that's, you know, I hope you guys will consider what we're asking and be able to work with this. Thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you. Hearing no more?
Yeah, there's a couple more.
Hello, my name is Pete Scharf, I live in the Riviera condos. And look at all these people. Look at them all. Have you ever had this many people here?
Yes. We've had more.
Hey, usually over negative things, this is a good thing to be here.
All we want, all we want is some help, you know? Some guy to come up the street, throw some salt down, you know? It's not like we're asking for new metal roofs or nothing. That's all we're asking for. And I'll tell you what, I'd like to get a picture of everybody here, because I cannot believe how many people showed up for this. And we're gonna post it all over town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I knew you couldn't sit for long. Well, you know, I had to. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but there was a lady, Sherry Ogden, I don't see her here. She was supposed to, to speak. What she wanted to tell council is that she worked for the Patriot Water Company for 23 years, and she said that, um, that the people, the residents of Three Mile could not refuse access to the pump station. We were told that they got incorporated because there was a pump station on the property and they needed access. Her working with the water company for so many years, she said that they, the utilities could not be denied access to the pump station. So that kinda does the excuse of, we took them in because of our pump station, doesn't really hold water, so.
That's cute.
Yep, yep, so I'm, you know, she was gonna be here, I don't know what happened to her, but anyway, uh, but that's what she wanted to say, is, you know, through her access of working many, many years in the water company, they, they couldn't be stopped from accessing the pump station, so.
I had to disagree with that, because we went up there to get that pump station one time, somebody cut a tree and let it fall across the road, we hadn't gone to it.
Well, yeah, but you couldn't be denied access.
No.
So, the residents couldn't say, "You're not allowed on our property."
Yeah, it wasn't residents, it was the owner of the property next to it, I do believe.
Okay, yep.
I wasn't present, but did you not have an easement back then?
We did have.
You go to the lift station?
Yeah, we did have.
So if we cut some trees down, we're good, right?
Anybody else got something to say? You know, we all feel pretty strong about this. We really, we really need council's help, and I know you told us that you would make a decision at the next meeting, and, um, so please consider, you know, like she said, our voting power, we're very patriotic, we've got a Vietnam Purple Heart recipient, lives in our community, many veterans, I know we got veterans here. You know, Pete, you're a veteran, who else a veteran? Yep, veteran, there we go. We got veteran, many veterans in our community.
Thank you for your service.
Yep, so, okay, that's all I got, anybody else?
I just have a question. Um, I, I don't know the answer to this, that's why I wanna ask.
State your name, please.
Uh, my name is Chris Bill, and I live at Riviera also. I am assuming that we are, Riviera is, is part of the, the city of Lawrenceburg, is that correct?
Yes.
Right, so is, is it possible then for the city council to pick and choose which streets they're going to take care of?
No, I mean, we're, we're directed, so we only, we can only take care of public streets, so your streets are private, that's the problem, I mean, that's the issue.
And, and they're not built to the city specs? I don't know if we would have to widen the streets or what?
But, no, then-
Three Mile is now.
It is.
But, but when, if you say they're not built to city specs, does that mean then if there were to be a fire or an ambulance, those?
Yes, ma'am, I mean, the way it works is that when a private development like Riviera comes to town, and I've been here since, you know, before, working busy before, during, and after, um, it's a planned unit development, so they come in with a, with a site plan, and this was done in multiple phases, and we, I mean, Riviera, we love Riviera, we love all you guys, we love the families that live there, the veterans, thank you for your service, we're some of the best people, future father, mother, future mother and father-in-law. So it's not a matter of, do we wanna do it, it's just a matter of, it's a private road. And so, when we have tax dollars and we allot them, and we budget, you know, what our folks driving the salt trucks and the plows can do, the only money that we can spend for that endeavor, like clearing the snow, is on public streets, public roads, public sidewalks, and in just broadest terms, it'd be the same as us plowing, somebody's driving a, a plowing on a private apartment complex. So that, that's the issue, it's not, we really don't wanna do it, or we're thinking about doing it, it's just that, that's the way it's structured. And then, that's the most general way to look at it, and then when you get into specifics, when you're talking about, President Abbott's talking about the standards of the specifications, I know you asked about that too. When a private company, like Fisher Homes or Riviera, or whomever, comes to town and they build their streets to their specs, then we don't get involved in that, and in fact, it's the opposite. We say, you know, hey, you guys, give us your site plan, we'll have the city approve it, the plan commission, but you can build anything you want within certain standards, but we don't ask for the roads to be wide enough for our trucks, or for there to be turnarounds. The only requirements are that if an emergency vehicle needs access to one of your buildings, like a fire truck, that you have minimum requirements for us to get there in an emergency. So, and that's generally the issue here, it's just that it's a, it's a private road, not a public, that's, that's kind of all it is.
But what they're asking is for us to incorporate their streets, correct?
How do you make it public, council?
Well, exactly, you're asking for us to incorporate the streets, just something we could.
Right, what I'm wondering is the fact that, are there, you know, is it possible to do that because I can see, you know, private streets or whatever, but we're, we're a pretty large community with lots of streets, and so it almost seems like it would be more logical to incorporate us or make us part of your city streets, since there are quite a few of us there, I mean-
But, if we do incorporate them, do we not have to bring the streets up to specs?
Yeah.
I mean, I, that's, that's a bolding question, right? Because if you look at Sycamore Estates, Sycamore Estates still isn't brought up to spec, because the specs say that there has to be sidewalks on both sides, there's sidewalks on one side, it specifies the streetlights, blah, 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 there's so many specs that are involved in it, but even some of our own city roads still aren't up to city specs technically. Three Mile Ridge is also one of those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I just think that, like I said, I mean, there's a large group of people here today, but in relation to the numbers of people who live there- here today, but in relation to the numbers of people who live there, this is really a small group. And we, we just would like to be considered, because it's becoming more and more expensive with our HOA fees. You know, I was telling someone else that the city, I believe, gets the recycling bins, the big tall, but we get the little bags. You know, and we get the little bags that you take up to the filled dumpsters at, at the firehouse. And I just, I would appreciate some consideration on the part of the council.
And, and, you know, I can speak for the mayor and council without even checking in on them, I mean, we would do anything for anyone, so, you name it, we would do it, and these guys do it every day. It's just, the only issue is that it's a private street, it's a private road, and it was built private.
But it could be taken over, it could be taken over by the city, it could be incorporated then, or whatever, whatever the term is.
So if we, if we start, if we did start plowing your roads, would HOA lower your HOA fees for those to go down?
Of course it would.
I have no clue, but, I don't know.
It wouldn't go up.
I just know, I feel like I live in the city of Lawrenceburg and I enjoy all of the things that, that the city offers, but last winter was a nightmare. I mean, I could not get out of my driveway, and I just feel like the city needs to at least take a look at us and say, "We're a pretty large community and we need to be considered."
And we would, if we built those roads, we would absolutely do that, because it's not just about plowing streets, it's about fixing the curbs, redoing the asphalt, repaving, redoing the sidewalks, like Dylan said, the lighting, the storm sewer, so, if we build something, if we're responsible for something, we make sure it's top-notch. We, we didn't build that, the private group built it, you guys all bought into that community, you all pay HOA fees.
So are you saying you did that for Three Mile, you redid all their streets, their sidewalks, their storm drains?
You can wait until she's done, well, you, she said.
My, my, my father and mother lived at Three Mile Ridge for, for quite some time, and I know that when the streets were taken over, there was nothing done any differently. I mean, as far as widening the streets or anything else, my father was the president of the board at that time, and I know that nothing was done. So, you know, to say that you'd have to come in and do other things to our streets, I don't believe that, because it didn't happen at Three Mile.
That's the process. We are, Dylan, Craig, and Rob, we accept and assume the private street system, we have to make sure it conforms to citizens, just be able to use that. Is that your opinion?
I mean, not necessarily, I would say you take it as it is, because the thing is, is when we go back and repair it, just like when we go back with Sycamore Estates, there's potential to use CCMG if it's eligible, obviously the state budget, so forth and so on. There's a bunch of different avenues that we could take, long-term, it's kind of doing it through fruition. If we have to maintain those roads in the future, you can use CCMG or something else potentially. I don't know, I'm not the attorney, but from my understanding, you can assume the roads as they are.
That's basically what we've been waiting on, is to see if we can or we can't. Now, I know when we took over the road going to the boat docks, we had to completely redo it in order for us to get it.
Well, I think the biggest thing is, I think these people want answers.
Exactly. They've asked for two months now.
At the last meeting, at the previous meeting, they said, you know, we would talk to Brad Mattes, we would do certain things and let these guys, let everybody know what's, what's going on, to give them some kind of answer, whether we can do it, whether we can't do it. My question is, has anybody talked to Brad? Has anybody contacted him and said, "Hey, you know, is this something that's feasible? Can we actually do this or not do this?"
I thought we were gonna talk about this the first meeting in August.
Also, you were thinking the first meeting?
Yes, we said we would have them an answer by the first meeting in August.
Yeah, that's when we said we would vote on it, is August.
Okay.
Yes.
That's when Brad's supposed to come in.
So Brad's not supposed to come in till August, or we're not supposed to...
Right.
But I think it's one of those things where I think we need, we definitely need to check into it. I mean, see if this is something that we could do, or see if this is something we cannot do.
Right.
Get some kind of numbers on this, if we want to take over these streets and bring them up to a certain spec, we gotta have some kind of numbers to see if that's, you know, that we can put that in a budget or not put in a budget. It's, it's budget season right now, so, I think it's something they, there's been a lot of, been several meetings, and I think they need answers. That's my opinion.
Well, and something I shared with Tommy from AIM, is there's, there's other cities out there that won't let private developments own their own streets because of safety concerns. You can't get a fire truck up there in the wintertime if it's not sowed and plowed, ambulance or other things, that...
Yes, you can.
Yeah, what was that?
Yes, you can, there was a fire truck, big fire truck along my street last week.
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying if there's safety concerns and we can maintain them, or keep...
No going back and forth, we're gonna talk at the podium.
So, anyways, what I was saying is, the concern is, is if we don't maintain the streets, what if there's a situation where there's a bad winter like last year and we can't get a fire truck up there? There's cities like Valparaiso, that's the specific city that I'm talking about, that does not allow private developments to own and operate their own roads because of concerns like that. In my head, it's a valid concern.
Well, not just there, what about up, up there, I live on Bel Air also, and what about the apartment buildings, what about the nursing homes, that they couldn't get in? I was running around when it was bad, when you guys was calling, pushing people out, trying to get help, we couldn't get them help, we're, we're just, it was snowed under, we couldn't get up there.
Those aren't roads, those are parking lots.
But they're still, they gotta get in there, it's, it's no different.
Like you have access to the fire hydrant, or something else from the roadway.
Well, I mean, I would want to, if we're gonna do this private development, we should probably do all private roads.
Now...
Oh, we're asking, I'm sorry.
Is this not a PUD?
Yes.
And we can't stop PUD from coming in, can we?
No, it's the opposite, I mean, when they develop a PUD, they say specifically, "We want to build this community, we're gonna collect fees from our tenants to take care of their roads." And the city has to stay out of it, that's the trouble. We're, we have to stay out of your community by the nature of your planned unit development. So when you come in, you say, "You're developers, people who build, not you guys, you guys didn't do anything. You guys are awesome, and this isn't about you personally or anything." It's just, when someone builds a development like Riviera, it's built on the premise that the city can't get involved, because you're building it and then you're collecting the HOA fees to take care of the roads, and the sidewalks, and everything else. That's what the HOA fees are.
Would that not be the same thing as Three Mile Ridge, though? I mean...
I don't know anything, I don't know what they...
Because they're also an HOA, so very similar, I mean, if that's the case, you can't, I, I hear what they're saying.
The argument is we should take over all private roads, and that's fine, but like Mark said, we gotta figure out what their costs, because it's not, again, a city takes care of that.
Did you pay HOA?
Then we can look at what that entails, but as a city today, the city takes care of the public streets, not ours.
Okay, well, my name's Diana Ward.
I'm stuck with that.
And I'm the president of HOA.
Name, please.
I'm Diana Ward, and I'm the HOA president for Riviera 2, which I just took over from Fisher at end of December. And I'm telling you, when we have to raise these HOA rates, and I, you start seeing all these for sale signs up there, because people are already complaining that it's way too much, because Fisher did not raise the HOA fees for Riviera 2 for eight years. And then the last two years, they finally decided to raise it, $30. So Riviera 2, when we have to do a big HOA hike, because we will, we're gonna have a lot of for sale signs going up, because these senior citizens cannot pay it.
But that's what I'm asking, if we...
And all we're asking, it's a mile and a half of roads, two of your councilmen have been up, have viewed the area, they know what the roads look like, where to put the snow, it's not a big area. Our sidewalks are great, I walk seven miles up there every day. Our sewer drainage, the drains are great, after three inches plus of rain last night. All we're asking is, you've done it for Three Mile, do it for us, because we're not getting any benefits for living up there. We don't get recycles, we don't get money to wash the black crap off our house, we pay for all that.
We got nothing to do with the black...
Well, okay, but people, there's, if you live in town, you get some kind of thing back.
Not from the city, ma'am.
Okay. Well, all I'm saying is, we're asking you to take this in consideration, because as Riviera 2, our HOA fees are gonna go up, and you're gonna see for sale signs, and people are gonna say, "Hey, what's going on here?" We pay over forty-some thousand for snow removal. Do you know what our snow people charge us to do our sidewalks? $52 an hour per shoveler. That's crazy. All we're asking, please take care of our roads.
That's what I'm asking, ma'am, can I ask one?
Just for clarification, too, as they stated, back when Riviera, Riviera was developed, there was a PUD, and it's in our ordinance book under 154.35 Riviera Plan Unit Development, and it goes through, everything is spelled out in there, as Mr. Weldon stating. That's what keeps us from doing what you're asking, because this is in written form. So you might want to take a look at that as well.
And that, and ma'am, my question is directly linked to the HOA fees, because my understanding would be that if the city takes this over, your HOA fees are not gonna go down, or not raised, they're still gonna be raised, whatever they need to be raised. It's just that, that money, I guess, would be used for something else. But if we take over, if we accept and assume this community, we can't just do part of it, we have to do all of it, and then we have to pay for repaving and redoing roads and stuff, which, you know, that's just a big undertaking, and what we're, what we're stuck with is the current law, which Mr. Lett just read to you, which is that we can't be involved in that, because it's a private unit.
I have two questions to counsel, Patricia, Patricia Wells. Number one, I've heard this, streets don't meet spec, where do I find the spec? Where are they written?
We would have, so what we would have to do, which we can do, and we'll talk, we'll consider doing these guys' work, we would need to do an engineering study, we'd have to send someone up to look at everything, see if things need to be changed, maybe they don't so much here, or somewhere there, but we would need to look at it in a comprehensive view, it would be as simple as asking.
When Fisher...
Like your, your roads up there, some of them, I do a lot of work up there, and like during a good rain, or after the rain, you can see water coming up through the middle of your road there. That's because the road bed's no good. So you gotta do borings, you gotta do borings that the, because you might have to rip the whole road up and put new...
I don't know what you're talking about. Yeah, I don't know what, what's he talking about? Anybody know? Anybody see that?
I know, but the water just come up in the middle of the asphalt, and it, it does in their places. I'm just saying, that's part of the...
Straight line.
Wait a minute, guys.
Straight line.
Come on, quiet, that's part of the road bed, that's things we have to look at. They, they would do borings to see what the road bed is like, whether it's satisfactory, to put a new road down on it, asphalt on it, or do we have to tear up the asphalt and redo it, and everything, so there's a lot to it.
So, when Fisher came to the city of Lawrenceburg with their plan, their community plan, didn't somebody from the city of Lawrenceburg have to approve that plan?
Under a PUD.
Yeah, I don't, what's PUD?
Plan, Unit Development.
Okay.
And if you want, the question you asked earlier, you just called Johnny Johnson, he'll give you the specs on the roads, here at the city.
No, I shouldn't have to call him, they should be posted somewhere where I can read them.
Well, it's on the internet, but he can, he can let you know where it's at.
Yep. I wanna, y'all get a pencil out, 'cause I'm gonna tell you something. Declaration, our declaration, 2.6.7, it's called Road Declaration, okay? Now, there's a whole paragraph, lots of legal stuff that you, Dell, will be familiar with, so I just, I'm gonna pull out a sentence that, that I can understand, and it is, it is recorded in the courthouse, in the official record book of 171, page 104.6, okay? And they have a bunch of legal stuff there, but it says, the, the declarant, who is Fisher, right, reserves the right to have all or part of the roadway dedicated as a public street. Okay? So, they already, you know, they said, "They," they didn't do it, so now we're asking council, "Let us be public, we want to be public." You know, we have kept up, I've been either on, I've been on the board since 2012, and we have totally kept up the maintenance on everything. Everything from checking the, the sewer lines to the streetlights, just last week, we did the crack sealing, so we keep it up. But like Diana said, Riviera 2 just took over, and they're responsible for the clubhouse and the pool. Now, we'd all be fooling ourselves if we didn't know there was a problem at the pool, right? And one of these days, we're gonna have to deal with that, but right now, we're gonna be dealing, the clubhouse needs a new roof. So, we just put roofs on a couple of our buildings several years ago, and it was close to $70,000 for a roof. So the clubhouse, more peaks, more space, I wouldn't be surprised if it wasn't $100,000. So y'all get ready, 'cause it's coming, all right, next year. And all the other big expenses, that Fisher didn't do any favors by not raising the HOA, because they were left with a reserve of $32,000. And you all deal with bills coming at you every single day, and you know $32,000 doesn't fix anything anymore. So, we don't want to see for sale signs go up, but people, if they can't pay, we have to do a special assessment, people are gonna move away.
That's what I'm saying, you're not, even if we did this, even if we figured out a way to do this, you're not gonna go look, your HOA fees aren't gonna go down.
Not gonna go down, but, but if we allot $40,000 a year for snow removal.
I know, but if we, if you told us that Diana was gonna lower everyone's HOA, take them away, now I'm not paying HOA anymore as long as the city plows their snows, then that would be something to think about, but that's not what we're telling.
They haven't said that.
That's not, that's not fair to us.
My, my question is, real quick, just like any ordinance that we have, or anything like that, so the PUD, for example, if there's not an agreement between, well, if there is an agreement between the HOA and the city, could that ordinance not be repealed? Right?
Well, it's, the PUD is there, they, they...
I need to speak.
But, I'm saying, if the HOA is agreeing to go away with it now, could it not be repealed?
It can't work like that, because they all own the, they all own this community.
Okay, once again, my name is Shirley Graff. You were talking about the HOA fees. Three Mile Ridge did not get rid of their HOA fees. So what you're telling me is, that they did and they did not. So you're upkeeping all their stuff, and they're still collecting...
It really doesn't have anything to do with HOA fees.
Well, that's not what Dell said a few minutes ago.
Well, we need to find out, is the city allowed to incorporate your streets? That's what we have to find out. And that's, Dell, you have to look into that, and, I mean, if, if we can, I'm sure everyone up here will vote yes, we'll do it for you.
But I think it's, I think we...
And we gotta know how much.
We have to check into this, we have to get some kind of engineer, or somebody up there, check into it, see what streets, you know, maybe we can just do the main street, you know, maybe...
Right, and that's one thing that we're even asking, is, you know...
But I think that we definitely need to take a look at it, or if you guys don't want to, I, I don't get a vote, but if you guys don't want to take a look at it, then you know...
I do know that Three Mile did not widen their streets or anything, believe me, my husband, like I said, was president for six years there, and I'm sorry, he can't speak because he's no longer with us, but they did not do anything to those streets, or anything for the city to take over Three Mile Ridge. And I know that for a fact, because I know a lot of people that live up there, and I have talked to them. So, they did not low, I don't know what their HO fees are any longer now, I did know at one time. We're not asking to get rid of our HO fees, we would still take care of our, our yards, you know, things that we have to take care of, just like Three Mile, I'm sure you don't go up there and mow their yards for them. So their HOA fees are paying still for things that we will still be paying for with our HOA fees. I'm sorry, I know, you know, we're, you know, we have a lot of votes up there, and we can, you know, we can really, and I do know that the council that came in is the reason that Three Mile got put into the city. I do know that for a fact, 'cause, so, thank you, I'm sorry.
One thing I would like to ask for, Dell, we've been asking for answers on this for months, give us the legal information that we need for whether or not we can do this. Well, you keep telling us there's legal ramifications for this, tell us what it is, can we do it or can we not do it? That's what we're asking for.
Well, how about if we bring in an engineer to take a look at it and see what it would involve?
We got another one coming up.
Hi, I'm Angie Stahl. My husband and I have lived at Riviera for three years. We're from Ohio County. We lived there all of our lives. And we chose to come to Dearborn County, because Ohio County is not proactive, and... because Ohio County is not proactive, and we came here for that reason. All I'm asking for is just to be willing to see us as equals, as residents of the rest of the county, and at least give us the opportunity, instead of just saying, no, it can't be done. Anything can be done.
We haven't, we have not said that it can't be done. We're still trying to find out if it can be done. Like I said, I don't think there's one councilman up here that would deny it. If we can do it, we'll do our best to do it.
Yeah.
We have to find out.
I mean, I don't think you realize how good your community is. You just don't. I mean...
I'm very aware. I've lived in Larnsburg all my life, trust me.
Yeah.
I know how we're a community is.
Yeah. I mean, it's a wonderful place here. You should be very, very proud. And, you know, I'm proud to say I'm from Dearborn County now, and I live here, and I talk to people that live in Ohio County, and how we like it up here, and the things that we offer, and that's important, you know? I just want it to be for you to see that, how important it is, how we're important too, as all your residents. So I don't know if that made a difference or not, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Holler, and I've lived here for about six years at Riviera, and I've lived all over the country. I've seen good communities and bad communities. This is a good community. I can't believe the commerce you have on one street and what effort you guys put in and previous councils put in to make that happen. And that's for, you know, your constituents. That's for the voters. That's for the people that you've done that as well, as the growth of the city. And the downtown, beautiful, the eateries, the river, the side, the riverfront, new condos, apartments, it's great. You've done a lot of good things. This is another thing we're asking you to do a good thing for the betterment of the community, and that's what you'd be, that's what you would be doing for these people. So for what it's worth, you know, the better good, may we take us in.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else?
Faye Lanans and I've lived at, we've lived at Riviera for almost 12 years. I just, I think we all are wondering, what did Three Mile Ridge do differently if they weren't up to standard and you took them over? What did they do differently that maybe we can do to be taken over? You said they weren't up to code, and now they are. Did you all do that? Did they do it?
To be honest with you, I think the answer is, is no one up here knows, because it happened under another administration.
Okay.
So we don't know what happened to be completely...
Okay. I mean, I just think that's what, you know, we're, if something we can fix, you know, that you would take us, then, but...
I'm right there with you.
Yeah.
I think all of us are. I will say this much. I do remember, I want to say, 2018, 2019, that the city of Larnsburg, after they took over, Three Mile did repave their streets.
We did something up there, yes.
Yes, they did.
They did, they did pave the road back to the restaurant.
Again, as I stated before, we told them that we would try to have them an answer by August, first meeting in August, so that's where I'm at with it.
But what do we have to do to get those answers? That's, I mean, that's what we've been beating around the bush on.
PUD written up in our ordinance book. I mean...
Well, let's, anything's possible. Let's talk about it and figure something out.
All right. Anybody else from the audience on this subject?
Dan Og. Anybody get their real estate taxes increased?
Yes.
That's not a...
I know, I know. I know, but you're talking about costs and things like that. Mine went up 11% over last year. That's a significant amount of money, and these people that are talking about living on social security and all that, when their real estate taxes go up, and if our HOA continue to go up, what are these people going to do?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, guys, for you guys coming out. It is nice to have a crowd in the room, because we don't always get that. And you guys are here standing up for your community, so I can appreciate that. Thank you.
In the August meeting, please bring a lawn chair.
Let us know you're coming.
We'll have that thing. The August fourth, bring in an extra chair.
I know you are.
We have this many people. We got snacks, so...
I was going to say, somebody needs to bring some food.
Hey, I told the mayor we'd be here, so he knew.
That's why he stayed here.
That's why, that's why he's not here, though.
I saw him, he pulled up and he saw you guys.
He blames it on his back.
Yeah.
Or he said he had a back problem.
You guys are the best. Thanks for...
Yep.
Thank you.
And we'll do whatever we can.
And we're just trying to let you know what we're stopping. We didn't make any of this, we moved our laws up. We just want you to know that if we could do it, we'd do it, or you guys prefer, we plow every driveway in Larnsburg if we could. It's just there's all these things we have to think about, so we want you to know that we're doing, but you can do it.
And then, when we do do it, if we end up doing it, and that snow plow goes down your road, and he plows all that snow in the back of your car, don't call us. Get your shovel out.
We got snow shovel.
Happens to me every winter. Four foot of snow beside my car.
You see all these people, everybody was chipping in and helping each other when we had that snow, because that's what we do up there.
That's, that's great.
We help each other. We're all a big team up there. We have a great community.
Oh, we can tell. We're, yeah, we can tell.
Anybody else on this subject?
I got one more thing to say.
You still got your camera, Pete?
Pete Sharp again. Do you guys know of any hills steeper than ours in the whole city?
Well, we wouldn't have built it that way.
I'm just saying, do you all know of any, that's a steep hill?
Yes.
I mean, what if somebody is coming down and gets killed? One of these people, me.
Now, I'll say something on that. We had nothing to do when they built that up there, and that's the thing. If we'd had something, it'd been a little different, maybe, but it was put in before we ever had anything to do with it.
Well, it's built now. There ain't no turning back.
But now they're wanting fixings that should have been fixed earlier.
Agreed.
That's, that's the, that's where it's at, and we're trying to help you, but it's just, we got to figure out how to do it, because we got a big city, a big city. And if people, when this thing went on, I told them, I live on Bel Air, I said, I want to be the last street up on the hill to be done. They got it my place the second time around in that first day. It was midnight, one o'clock, when they got over to me.
You're talking about snow plowing.
Yeah, plowing. And then, you're talking about digging out? I dug out three times in one day. So me and him, I was wanting to get out there and catch it, but he was gone before I could.
I'm just saying, it's not flat up there.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
You can get killed.
Close calls.
All right, I'm going to close on this subject. There's no one else. I'm going to let, that's a different subject. So you guys, come on up, Gene.
Change of subject, right?
And I like all you people, too. Jean Fauch, what I really wanted to say was, thank you for the Bluegrass Music Saturday. It was very lovely, and very nice that the city put that on. But what I'm thinking about this whole thing, listening to this, which I have nothing to do with it, but forty thousand dollars a year for snow removal doesn't sound like a lot of money to me for this many units. I pay, I pay quite a bit of money to have the snow removed off my driveway, too.
Where do you live at?
On Priville Road.
Oh, Priville, okay. I was thinking Three Mile.
Yeah, I mean, I, I...
Would you shut up?
Aren't there, aren't there like almost 300 units up there? I mean, that's not a lot of money per person. That's like not even 150 bucks.
Yeah, but we also have to get up above houses.
Well, I know, but that's your own stuff. I mean, you know, you're complaining about the snow removal. I mean, the city can't keep up your clubhouse. I mean, they don't keep a clubhouse for me, you know? I mean, you know, I mean, it just doesn't seem like a lot of money to me. I mean, I paid that much money this year for snow removal, too.
Forty-five now.
No, but if you divide it by the amount of people there, you know, yeah, I did. I got a nice, long driveway.
You don't lose that, and I got a short one.
Thank you, Jean.
You snuck that one in.
Yeah. I thought you said you had something else.
You did, something different.
Oh, you, thanks for the Bluegrass. Yeah.
Oh. Anyone else?
I just want to know, was any of yous in the bike race this weekend? I'm just asking.
In this?
Yeah.
Were you?
Me? No, they actually wanted me to do the tricycle race. Could you see me on a tricycle? Uh-uh, that ain't happening.
Don't make one big enough.
Yeah.
All right, hearing no more comments, and make sure you're here, first meeting in August.
We'll be here.
We will do our best to have an answer. So I'll take a motion for adjournment.
No, you won't. Got to pay bills.
Pay bills.
Got to pay bills.
Yeah, I guess we do, don't we?
Yes, we do.
All right. Review and discussion of claims for board approval.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to prove all payable reports and checks once properly certified.
So move.
Second.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Everything paid. Motion for adjournment.
So move.
Thanks, everyone.
Favor.
See you on August fourth.
Thank you all for coming.